Welcome to Lincoln City Council Meeting of 11 December 2017. Let us all rise for a pledge allegiance followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the item listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue, not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item?
Yes, and just for public knowledge, due to Christmas and New Year's Day holidays, the City Council will not meet on Monday, December 25th, or Monday, January 1st. Our first item is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through five.
Will anyone like to speak on any of these items? Is anyone here for an appointment?
All right, if not, we can vote on these items. Item one was introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion, please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item two was introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, or excuse me, Carl, seconded by Leirian. Discussion, please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next in are our public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll call items six and seven together. They are the application of Spectra Food Services for a Class I liquor license and a Class E Entertainment District liquor license at 350 Canopy Street, Suite 120, as well as the related manager application of Brian Cradju- not a clue. We do have a request to continue public hearing in action for one week on these two items.
So moved.
Okay.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Cindy. Just so you know, if you are here to testify on this item, you'll still have an opportunity to testify today. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
All right, is there anybody here who would like to speak on this item? Okay, next item, please.
All right, next is our public hearing resolutions. Item eight is assessing the costs incurred for cutting, clearing, and removing weeds against the various benefited properties for the period of January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017.
Good afternoon, Brent Meyer with the City of Lincoln Weed Abatement. I'm here in support of this item. This is, the list before you is all the properties that remain unpaid for the mowings for the 2017 season. This is for the overgrowth of properties that, that the landowners, for one reason or another, did not take care of on their own, and the city had to issue notices on that and take care of for those. So with that, I would ask for the council's support on that today.
Are there questions of Mr. Meyer? Very good, thank you very much. Is anyone here who would like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next is item nine, approving a purchase agreement between the city and Hometown Trolley for compressed natural gas low-floor trolleys for a five-year term.
Mike Davis, Transit Manager with Startran, and I'm here to, for this item of the purchase of trolley vehicles. And these vehicles are anticipated to increase ridership and to be a great asset and tie to the history of Lincoln. And I do have a picture that will show you what these vehicles will look like, or something very similar. They have kind of a texture to them which is hard to see, but they're reddish on the, on the top. And with that, I'll be here to answer any questions.
Questions for Mike, Benny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm excited about the idea of the trolleys, and I'm, so I'm really interested in the hours of operation, since it will be tied to the hay market in downtown. Would it stick to the same schedule as the bus schedule, or there'd be extended times and maybe weekends?
So right now, the trolleys will be used on the Route 55, the Star Shuttle, and it will, it's not anticipated that those times will change. The Star Shuttle does not currently operate on weekends, but does operate from early in the morning till later in the evening.
Yeah, I'm frequently a user of the shuttle, I enjoy that.
Great.
It's a real easy way to get around town.
Carl, and just following up with Mr. Schob's question, the, the shuttle currently costs a quarter?
The shuttle, right, the shuttle currently costs a quarter, and, and, and that is planned to continue as well.
All right. John?
Yes, Mr. Davis, do you see any change in the future on the route of the shuttle, or excuse me, of the trolley from the current downtown shuttle route?
Right now, we do not see a change at, to the route. It is building ridership each year, and so we're seeing that already strengthen, and we anticipate the trolley continuing to contribute toward that. So the route is working well right now. If, could it expand in the future, absolutely, and there's opportunities potentially, as more funding becomes available, to do that as well.
And could you also address the options you have to purchase more of the trolleys?
Right, so this, this purchase agreement, it, we can purchase up to four trolleys with this agreement. We plan to purchase an initial two trolleys, and, and then if the need arises, be able to exercise those other two options.
And could you discuss the finances on that, where the, where the sources of funds would come from, and how much they would cost to buy the subsequent ones compared to the first two?
The, yes, there, the, I will probably, would like to call Heather up to answer the question if there's an escalation in cost for the second two trolleys.
Hi, Heather Sullivan, purchasing agent for Startran. Yes, there is escalation, that way, the difference between the total of 1. something million, and also the $862,000 right now is the difference. It's already built in there.
You know what the difference is?
Not off the top of my head. I have to do some math.
Oh, so it's a percentage or something?
So, I think it was not to exceed 1.5% per year escalation for each year. So year five would be the highest escalation point.
So we're talking roughly 700,000 each?
Yes.
Okay, and so where would the source of funds come for those subsequent purchases if we did exercise?
So the, the source of funds currently, 50% federal, and, and then we have about 3% that's through Black Hills Energy, as well as, as, and then the rest is general fund, user fees, things that make up that, that remaining amount. So there have been no funds allocated for implementation of a second route that would utilize additional trolleys. That would have to come through a future budget process.
Would that perhaps be all local general funds then?
It, it could be local, however, each year, there's grant opportunities that become available, and so that would be an option for future years as well, is to apply for additional grants.
And finally, just comparing the trolley, and like the trolleys, so this is not against them, but comparing the cost of the trolleys, say rounding it 700,000 versus what is a bus, let's see, how many passengers get on the trolleys?
The, I believe the trolleys hold around 26, 27 passengers, and, yeah, fixed route bus, our last purchase of fixed route buses was in 2015, and they were about 483,000 dollars each. So these are, these are comparable.
Passenger-wise?
Yeah, maybe a few less passengers, but they will have the same engine, same heavy duty to them.
So 50 to 60% more for the trolley than what you purchased in 2015 for this?
No, the trolleys are actually less, if I understood your question correctly, the trolleys are less than a regular full-size bus would cost, but slightly less.
I thought I just heard you say 480,000 for a fixed route bus, and?
It's 431,000 and some change for the current trolleys each, and then escalation of 1.5% for the, for the five years.
Okay, thank you. Leirian?
Thanks for being here tonight. In the previous discussion, we had a briefing on this topic. We were discussing the, the old contract, which had to be canceled due to some defective issues with the trolleys that we, the original company. With this new company, which is a direct manufacturer source, the cost for the two trolleys is significantly higher with some benefits. I was hoping you could discuss those benefits, and then could you also talk about the source of the money that funds the gap from the old price to the new price? I think you'd mentioned vehicle replacement as the source, but what does that imply for the rest of the fleet? Are we, are we going to have to hold off on replacing another bus elsewhere? Can you speak to that issue too?
Absolutely, there are, future bus purchases are not impacted by this purchase. We do set aside funding to match grants for the purchase of vehicles, and the, so I'll go in just a little bit more detail on the differences. These vehicles are a 10-year vehicle. They have the, a same, or similar engine to our, our full-size buses. They are a rear-engine bus, they are low-floor. That makes them much more accessible for people not having to walk up steps to get on the vehicles, and if they're individuals or wheelchair-bound, they'll be able to access it much easier with the, with the ramp. And so we anticipate higher ridership through these features, and in turn, that higher ridership can turn around and benefit overall in our system to additional revenues from fares and, and savings in our operational costs. So there will be some of that savings that will contribute over time. And I'm not sure that that answered your entire question, so any follow-up?
Just if the pool of money is vehicle replacement, but it sounds like it's not, it's, it's not just vehicle replacement, it's, it's vehicle replacement through a grant matching program, is that correct?
So, right, we pool money from, from different sources, whether it be fares from, from user fees to general fund, and those all have to be local funds to then match federal, federal funds going towards these vehicles.
So maybe my question put another way is, if we weren't doing this new contract that costs $350,000 more, what would that $350,000 be put towards, or would it be sitting in that pot waiting to match a grant?
That money would still be utilized toward the purchase of vehicles. So, yeah, it's been set aside to, to purchase vehicles, and, but we are still on track for our vehicle purchases in the coming years. It doesn't reduce the number that we'll be getting. We have 67 full-size buses, and we have a replacement schedule set up to make sure that those get replaced over time.
So no practical impact to riders then, in terms of the condition of buses that otherwise would have been replaced?
Right, there's, yeah, there, there will not be an impact to, to our riders. In fact, we'll be procuring another 11 vehicles that we, that right now are planned to arrive next year as well, and so that will be a benefit.
And now for the light and fluffy question. In some communities, they name their trolleys. Are we going to name these, you know, Dolly and Wally and Molly have seen this in other places. Is there any plan to, to give them personality?
Dolly the Trolley?
Not kidding, yeah.
We have no plans currently, but that may change or come with time as people begin to name the trolleys, so. We may have a competition, yes.
Why don't we sell the naming rights?
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Cindy?
Thank you, thanks for being here tonight. So if they're not running on weekends, these are quite a novelty, right, in Lincoln? And so if they're not running, being used on weekends for those routes, are they going to be available maybe for special events in Lincoln? I'm really liking the historical aspect of it, and I'm thinking of historical Unai Place and, and Bethany area and Havelock, that if there's things going on at the event center, might something, somebody be able to lease that out for those special events?
Absolutely, they, well, they can definitely be used on special services. We do have regulations that we need to stay within as far as when we do those special services. There's proper notifications and things like that that have to happen, but when we're meeting those regulations, absolutely, these vehicles can be used in, in other ways. And they can be used on, on other routes if needed as well.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else I'd like to testify on the, this item? Next item, please.
All right, next, item 10, approving a, or I'll call it 10 and 11 together, approving a bike-share system equipment agreement in the amount of $775,192 between B-Cycle and the city for the purchase of equipment, and approving a two-year bike-share operations and maintenance agreement in the amount of $659,510,000 between B-Cycle and the city for ongoing maintenance of the bike-share program.
Good afternoon, David Carey with the City County Planning Department. Thank you for some time this, this afternoon. What we have before you are two, those two items. The first item, the equipment contract, just to be clear, has a motion to amend attached to it that we'll need to make sure we take action on. Just a little bit of background, and then I'm going to have Kelly Van Bruggen from the planning department come up and talk about some, a brief overview of some of the specifics of the, of the agreements that are in front of you. We also have Ben Turner from Heartland B-Cycle, who is the B-Cycle representative from the Omaha system. He's available here for discussion today. We also have representatives from Spree Tail and the Lincoln Community Foundation, that are two of our main sponsors, so I appreciate their attendance. And I also have a letter of support that I want to hand out to everyone right now, we just got it this morning, from the UNL Chancellor's Office. Michelle Waite is a, does, wasn't able to attend today, but wanted to make sure that she was on the record to, as a letter of support, as another sponsor of the program. I would point out that our prototype bicycle is out in the hallway. If you all want to take a look at it after we're done today, if you didn't see it already. Apparently, Tom Cassidy already took a spin on it, so be forewarned. Really just want to make a point of saying that it took a while for us to get to this moment. We're very excited to finally have our contracts ready to go. It took some significant effort from our law department and representatives from B-Cycle, and then work from Public Works, as well as the planning department, and the Nebraska Department of Transportation to get us to this point. Prior to this meeting and these agreements, you did already act on and approve a program agreement with the State Department of Transportation, as well as four sponsorship agreements that have come before you already up to this point. And so with that, I'm actually going to have Kelly Van Bruggen from planning come up and give you a brief overview of some of the specifics of where, how we got to this point today.
Good afternoon. So if you remember, about three years ago, we really started off this process with a workshop that we held in conjunction with the University of Nebraska. And from that point, we went ahead and submitted a congestion mitigation and air quality grant to the State Department of Transportation, or CMAC for short, and we're awarded those funds. And so over the past three years, we've really been working through the federal process in order to get this program to come here. The equipment purchase is for 18 stations and 100 bikes that we would be purchasing for the Phase One part of this bike-share fa, or bike-share system. And then the operations and maintenance is a contract that we're executing with B-Cycle, and they're subcontracting with Heartland Bike Share, who's had experience in running a bike-share program in the Omaha metropolitan area for the past four or five years now. So we're really excited to bring them on board. We've also invited Ben Turner here to speak on behalf of Heartland Bike Share, how that system's been working over there, talking a little bit about user revenues, as well as how they operate and maintain their system. So I will invite him to come up and speak on behalf of them.
Hi, I'm Ben Turner, Executive Director of Heartland Bike Share. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit located in Omaha. We're, and our job is to operate bike-share systems in the Heartland region. So we currently operate 35 bike-sharing stations in the Omaha metro area, City of Omaha, Sarpy County, and Council Bluffs, on behalf of a few different owners ourselves, the City of Papillion, and Papio NRD. We have 199 bikes in operation currently, and we've seen continued steady double-digit growth year-over-year in the City of Omaha. We've been involved in the process in the City of Lincoln, maybe, well, I've personally been involved since December of 2014, and we view this as an incredible bike-share opportunity, you know, in our neighborhood. So I think, so a few things that really will lend itself well to success in this community. A lot of support behind the city really helps. The system's well laid out, the city's flat, has solid bike facilities, and the integration of downtown and the university lead us to believe that this will be a highly successful bike-share program, and we can't wait to get started and deliver exceptional bike-share to the City of Lincoln.
Okay, are there any questions? We'll start with Leirian, and then go to John.
I have questions about the operation of the program, so maybe for Mr. Turner, but then also for planning with the motion to amend. Just quickly, yeah, the, the contracts discuss having website information available. Who will manage that? How will the staffing for this program work, and how is that covered?
Yeah, I can, I can answer that question. So we're going to do, so we'll have a few different positions working on the City of Omaha. So myself will have some oversight, we'll have an operations director who'll work in both communities to make sure best practices are shared between programs, and everything's working on a bikes and stations side. We'll also have a memberships and marketing coordinator, and a Lincoln City manager. So the Lincoln City manager will be dedicated person in the City of Lincoln, base of the program. And then our marketing and membership person will do two-thirds of their time working in Lincoln, a third of their time working in the Omaha market. And they'll be responsible for website outreach. And then our city manager will be really responsible for a lot of day-to-day outreach, interfacing with the pub, public, and talking to folks to get them excited about bike-share and bringing them up to speed.
And does that also entail the repair and maintenance aspect of the operations? So if something goes wrong, your, your folks will take care of that quickly?
Absolutely, so we'll have a team of people, sort of with joint oversight from the operations director, and the local city manager. We'll have 70 to 80 hours a week of staff time devoted to bike repair, station repair, basically making sure there's a high-quality bike-share system working here in the City of Lincoln. Make sure that every time someone gets on a bike, it's the same, it's consistent, it's functioning, and those stations are up and running.
And all the information about who to call or who to contact will be presumably on the bikes themselves, as well as the kiosks?
Yeah, so we should, we should have phone numbers on bikes, stations, website, app. And then people can also reach out to us via email. We've, we use a third-party call center, and they are bike-share operators themselves, so they operate programs in Las Vegas, LA, Oklahoma City, and Philadelphia. And they also handle our car center operations. So anytime someone calls, they'll get someone who's expert in bike-share, uses it every day, and is able to resolve their problem right there on the phone. So we're excited about that option.
Thank you. And then just a question about the motion to amend that is coming forward. I, I see that it is reducing the number of bicycles purchased through the agreement. So I know you've said that there will be 100 bicycles regardless of the amount that's on this contract, but can you explain how that's going to work?
Yes, so last week, we were requested by Federal Highway to make this amendment to the contract. They requested this solely for the purpose of the Buy America issue that has come up. We can purchase up to 41 bikes under the Buy America regulations, and then the other 59 bikes would have to be purchased with local funds, and we have sponsorships lined up to be able to purchase those. So this motion to amend is basically for the CMAC portion of our purchase.
And CMAC again is congestion management air quality, is that what?
Mitigation, yeah.
Mitigation, okay, great. And this will reduce the value of the contract from 775,000 roughly to 679,000 through the grant, and those are grant dollars that are being reduced?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
John? Yes, I have several questions for each of you. Mr. Turner, I guess a couple things on the operation of this, and you'd mentioned for my colleague that there'd be 60 to 70 hours a week spent on what you said, repair and maintenance, their new bikes and so forth, that that's almost two full-time people. Can you help me understand that?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think the key thing first and foremost that we'll be doing is, one, making sure the stations are up and running. So we'll have, looking at purchasing 18 stations, essentially 18 computers out there. The, you know, our experience in Omaha has been, like any computer, sometimes they crash, sometimes they need to reset. So some of that effort will be making sure those stations are up and running. Some of that effort will be making sure bikes are in the same place. Even in a perfect system, people are using this for one-way trips, and so they're riding to, you know, to a given location and taking a different, you know, mean mode of transportation back. So bikes will tend to accumulate in certain places and need to be redistributed throughout the system. So everyone working will be doing sort of that 60 to 70-hour pool. People will be rebalancing the system as frequently as needed. And then even though the bikes are brand-new, and we've found a good winter overhaul process can make sure that they stay in like-new condition, one thing we've learned the hard way is that if you don't put air in the tires every two weeks, all your tires go flat. So there's some proactive maintenance that we'll engage in as well, to make sure, tires are always pumped up to 60 PSI or higher. Anytime someone gets on that bike, they're working brakes, the crank arm's not going to fall off. Essentially, there's some level of proactive maintenance that we'll engage in to make sure that the user experience is good. And then inevitably with, you know, things happen, so tires will go flat, people will drop the bike accidentally. Things like this will happen, and we'll still need to make some small repairs.
Now, well, those, if 60 to 70 hours is almost two full-time people, are they going to be living in Lincoln?
Yeah, absolutely. So we'll have, we'll have three to four people at least working out of our Lincoln office.
Okay, what have you found in Omaha as far as the revenues per year that you've gotten out of those 199 bikes?
Yeah, so we're at about, we're at about 40% recovering of our costs in Omaha. And I think we, in Omaha, have some challenges that, like topography, lack of access to safe bicycle facilities, and some culture, things that we anticipate not running into as severely in the City of Lincoln. So we're optimistic about the revenue that the system can generate here in Omaha.
Dollar-wise, what would the 40% equate to, please?
Ooh, that's a good question. I, if we hit that 40% mark, it would be between 100 and 120,000 a year, I believe. I could do the math, but.
Is that, so you're, is Omaha, what's their operating?
We're, we're just over $100,000 this year in revenue.
And what, but your contract with us would be for 330,000 a year. If 100,000 is 40%, so what's that? That's a little over 200,000 operating in Omaha, but you want 100,000 more for Lincoln for fewer bikes?
So our, let me see, so can we go through this again?
Sure.
All right, so my understanding is the first year of the contract here is $296,000?
Yes, and this contract also has this startup cost, so there's about 57,000 in that first year for getting the program up and running, hiring staff.
Equivalent building bikes.
Yep.
So that puts us down to 280,000 the first year, and so you're saying the second year is going to be 380,000?
The second year, I think it was a little-
660 total for the two years.
Right, I think in the contract, there is a sheet that lays out the price per year, and I thought it was around 306,000 for the second year for operations.
But 660 total?
Yep.
So if it's 50,000 less the first year, half of that's 330, so minus 50, it'd be 280 the first year, so 380 the second- so minus fifty, it'd be two-hundred-and-eighty the first year, so three-eighty the second year.
Yeah, I'm not sure without it in front of me. I mean, I could pull it up. I think to answer your overall question, though, there are some, in terms of costs in Lincoln, there are shortcuts that we take in Omaha in terms of delivering product that we're not going to take here. Essentially, we're making sure we're delivering always-on, always-working product. We don't have a contract like that in Omaha, and so we...
Well, it sounds like your contract in Omaha is for one-hundred-and-ninety-nine bikes.
We don't, we actually don't have a contract in Omaha. So we're just a nonprofit operating system.
Okay, B-Cycle is doing both, so...
Yeah, so we're a local nonprofit, and we contract with, we're contracting with B-Cycle here. And then we also use B-Cycle product in Omaha.
Mr. Carey, can you enlighten me?
Well, I think that, basically, the six-hundred-and-sixty thousand, if you subtract that initial ramp-up cost, it roughly adds up to about a three-hundred-thousand-dollar contract on average for the two years minus that cost. And so that's, it's not exactly equal the first year and the second year because of different things going on. But basically, what Ben is saying is that our contract is a fully-loaded contract to make sure that this is the type of system that Lincoln wants and deserves, for one thing. And it also ensures that we're getting the type of service on an ongoing basis to make sure that we have both consistency and the level of service that, as Ben was mentioning when he was explaining it, that we have all the different parts that you want to have. And when we looked at other systems across the country, this is the type of system that we wanted to get for Lincoln so that there weren't any of those questions initially, especially so that the confidence level can build quickly in the system. So that's really the type of contract that we have.
I appreciate that.
No, I think that's well said.
Well, and I'm trying to back into here. If you get forty percent of your costs in Omaha, and your costs in Omaha are less, and you have twice as many bikes, somehow the math, just real generally speaking, I'm interested in the revenues you're getting in Lincoln because that's going to have to make up the deficit, as I understand, between the sponsorships and the grants. And it looks like we've done well initially here. And what I'm looking at is the long-term in this program that suddenly we don't get a huge unfunded liability that falls on the city, which we are guaranteeing. So help me out there if you're just giving forty percent on, that's about a hundred thousand. You have twice as many bikes, so maybe we get fifty thousand because we have half as many.
No, I think, I mean, I think there's a few things. One, there'll be a much larger market of regular users here than there is in the City of Omaha for those reasons I mentioned earlier, bike facilities and topography. And I think most of our ridership comes from the core of our system. You could, yeah, so we're, most of our ridership comes from the core of the system, and you are building the core of your system here. So this first pass should generate, you know, should be the solid, well-performing locations that help get to those.
Yeah, I think the other part, your question is right on target. So there, obviously, we've done very well with the financing up to this point. We're in a very good spot, especially compared to other systems that I think Ben and others at B-Cycle have experienced with. So we do need, we were expecting to get somewhere around a third of our revenue to cover the costs of the ongoing contract from users. And then that's the work that has to happen, though. We've got to build up the system, not only deploy it, but also get the usership built up, memberships, users moving forward into this first year of deployment and launching of the system. But we feel confident that we'll get about a third of our costs covered that way. And quite frankly, we're going to, we continue to do this, and we have been doing it since the beginning of, since we've got basically the CMAC grant awarded to us, constant work on sponsorships. That'll never end. That'll be what we're going to continue to work on. And part of the reason they have Ben and new staff and staff that is going to be working in conjunction with us is to have that expertise to also do that work. And that is a big part of that ongoing operations contract, is that attempt and work at getting more sponsorship. So that'll be an ongoing effort, and we need to get more of that to happen.
Well, and, oh, just, I have one last thing on this. The City of Lincoln has done really well. Kelly's best bike share sponsorship person in the state by far. And so, I mean, I think the City of Lincoln's done a really good job so far at securing sponsorship, and nothing about what's going to happen in the next six months should hurt that at all. And then from our experience, you know, we've raised several million dollars in Omaha from private foundations for this effort, and we can bring that expertise to the table here in terms of grant writing and prospecting and things like that to help as needed as well.
The marketing person you referred to earlier is your employee, not B-Cycle's?
Yeah, correct. So we'll be hiring, we'll be hiring out a team. Our operations director is on board, and we'll be hiring, posting a job description tomorrow morning for our Lincoln city manager, if people are interested. And yeah, so we'll be building out our team over the next few months to be ready to go.
Well, it sounds like you have your marketing person in Omaha. You're going to split that individually?
We have not hired that position yet as well.
That'll be one-third Omaha and two-thirds Lincoln?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we'll be, we've raised the funds for that position, and we'll be hiring it as well to get started here in Lincoln.
Said you raised several million in Omaha.
Yeah.
So who raised that if you didn't have a marketing person?
I did.
Oh, thank you. Thank Omaha, thank you.
It used to be just me.
What I'm trying to get to here is, I'm trying to look on a unit basis. We're buying forty-one initially, which, under my math, that came out to sixteen-hundred-and-twenty dollars a bike. But with the fifty-nine you reduce, that ninety-five thousand savings equals sixteen-hundred-and-twenty dollars a bike. Ms. Hicks, Nancy Hicks, in the Journal Star today said it was eleven-hundred per bike. So I'm trying to allocate, so we reduce the, for the federal purposes, at ninety-five. Where's that going to, where's the ninety-five going to come from? Because so we get the full contingency of a hundred bikes.
Yeah, so the bikes are roughly around eleven-hundred dollars. But then we also couldn't purchase the shipping costs for them or the bicycle branding, which is where the additional cost per bike comes in and what's in that reduction that you have in front of you.
What's the cost for a bike, then?
It's probably, I think, fifty-five for shipping and fifty-five for branding for each bike.
Yes. I'm still at sixteen-twenty, I'm about four-hundred-and-fifty dollars off.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Are you on the equipment contract or the operations and maintenance contract? Because the equipment's in one and the operations are in another.
Okay, well...
And the equipment one also includes the kiosks, which are quite expensive, but are one-time expenditure.
That equipment, it's the racks, the kiosks, the technology within that, also the power, which is solar power. So there's a whole bunch of things in that contract that, in addition to the bikes.
I'm just looking at the initial purchase, which is this agreement.
Which includes all those stations and everything.
Well, and I'm just curious what it was, I'm just trying to get from the eleven-hundred that was in the paper to the sixteen-twenty when you reduce fifty-nine bikes. And what, I was...
There's a chart that's really helpful in the staff report that has the cost of fifty-five, the two different fifty-five-dollar costs, the kiosks.
And the difference, the motion to amend, as Kelly explained, that was necessitated due to the federal regulations that were made known to us last week. The, that money is available from our sponsorship that has been built up so far. So that number is covered already as well.
I'm just trying to look at that and then also project where the long-term. I just want to understand what liability when we get the thing going, you know, we've agreed to go ahead with the program. And I just want to understand for the benefit of our citizens and all, what we've got and what we have to cover. And there's a social benefit in having it as well. Anyone else? Cindy?
Yes, thank you. You mentioned that we expected, David, one-third from user fees. And what are we anticipating is, will be the percentage of cost from sponsorships over time? Do we have a projection?
So right now, we're at about a third for our sponsorship fees. And the way we set up initially was to get kind of the platinum-level sponsors, someone who would come in and have their logo on the station and on the bikes. Since then, now that we know what the actual costs are for the ongoing operations, maintenance, we've diversified our sponsorship levels. So we don't have just the platinum level. We're looking at getting gold level, silver level, and bronze level sponsors. So we think by diversifying that and allowing other people who didn't necessarily want to do the big purchase, but might want to participate in a smaller amount, that we can come up with the additional third for the operations and maintenance.
Do we have any platinum sponsors at this point?
We do. So all of our initial sponsors, University of Nebraska-Lincoln, Spree Tail, Lincoln Community Foundation, as well as Blue Cross Blue Shield of Nebraska, are all at our platinum-level sponsorship.
And we have like eighteen of those opportunities, is that right? With the eighteen stations, okay.
Another follow-up on that question is, we're going to get as many sponsors as we can get. I mean, that's the strategy. So I think Kelly has done an amazing job to this point in raising hundreds of thousands of dollars from local sponsors on the private side. We're really thankful that Ben and his team will be available for some of that work now because not only are they proven to be able to do that, but also we're really looking for some help on that because it's a lot of work. And it's money that's well, raising that money is a good thing, but that expertise is really going to be helpful, I think. Because I think we've just scratched the surface on what's available here in Lincoln for ongoing sponsorships. And that's, like I said, that's going to be an ongoing effort for this program.
So what I'm hearing you saying is by adding these partners, we're going to increase the amount over maybe our third, more than the third sponsorship?
That's what we're hoping, yeah.
I think that takes, with success in that area, it takes the pressure off of other areas. But also, it allows for reinvestment in the system as well. So that's a big part of that.
Okay, and then I just have one more question for Mr., is it Haynes? I'm sorry. Yes?
Turner.
Thank you. So how many folks, because you had mentioned the number of hours here, how many folks or staff or hours do you guys expend in the Omaha area with the one-hundred-and-ninety-nine bikes you have there?
So we have, we currently have, well, I guess we were going to have another guy start this morning, but he's going to start on Wednesday morning. So we currently have three full-time people working on that this summer. That's what we had throughout the summer as well. We'll look to, it'll probably be three and a half going into next season for us.
And that's not, though, giving them the degree of coverage you're talking about here in Lincoln?
Yeah, yeah, I think in terms of responsiveness and uptime and essentially, as David mentioned, those high-quality features, we just don't have that in Omaha. We think we can deliver a good job just without a contract that states performance objectives, we're allowed to make different decisions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
John has another question. Yeah, as part of what we're doing, it was mentioned that you'll be determining the cost of rides and membership this winter. And I would think that going ahead to look at the financial viability of the program and what you're going to expect from membership, sponsorships, and riders' fees, and you mentioned in Omaha, you're getting forty percent of the operating cost from fees. What are they charging for bike there? What, there's got to be an estimate of what you're assuming we'll have for bike ride here.
I can answer definitively for what we're doing in Omaha. And I will turn it over to someone from the planning department to make statements about what we're going to do in Lincoln. We have, so we operate on a, essentially, an access pass model. So to use the system, you need to purchase an access pass. We have a fun pass, which is good for twenty-four hours. We have a Heartland pass, which you can pay for monthly or annually. Six dollars for the fun pass, ten dollars for the monthly pass, eighty dollars for the annual pass. As long as you have a pass, you can ride as many times as you like. Pick up a bike at any station, drop it off at any station. The first hour of every trip is included with that pass. So anything over, any trip over an hour will cost four dollars extra. So...
Is that even with the pass?
Yeah, so if you wanted to buy a monthly membership and ride to work every morning, it's ten dollars a month. If you want to buy an annual membership and ride once a week at lunch, it's eighty dollars a year. If you want to check out a bike and ride it for two hours, six-dollar pass plus four dollars for the second hour, it's ten dollars.
So you have one-hundred-and-ninety-nine bikes in Omaha with all those passes and so forth, and the four dollars a ride above the pass? Or if I just go and I don't have a pass, what do I pay?
Six dollars for the...
So how many, how much is that totaled last year?
Oh, that's the hundred, a hundred thousand number. Yeah, actually, that's not quite true. The passes are maybe eighty-five percent, and the usage fee is about fifteen percent.
So, okay, so that comes up, is that like eighty, eight-hundred dollars a bike a year?
Oh.
If that's sounding right, eight-hundred times...
Maybe five-hundred would be the math.
Or maybe, I don't know, I mean, that was bad, that was in my head.
That's okay. My dad told me not to do math in public, this is...
I guess, I'm just trying to see on a bike what that is, what it boils down to. So that, and we've got half as many bikes. Say we promote it harder, we get more memberships and all. But you said you had a hundred thousand. Divide that by one-hundred-and-ninety-nine, so that's five-hundred and two dollars a bike.
Yeah, in terms of revenue.
As far as the city side, we're taking a look at what other communities have done, including Omaha. We do have a population, especially in the fall months, that come for an entire weekend. So some cities do a three-day pass. So we're looking at different pass options and how that might work here, keeping in mind what other communities have done.
Is there a remedy if I have a pass that gives me ten dollars a month? Say that's right here, and there's no bike available there at that station, I'm just...
So you would, you have a few options?
By calling your, at your marketing station or your call center?
So, yeah, no, a few options. One, you could call us. Two, we have an app that shows real-time information, as does our website. And then three, we have a map at every station that you'd be able to refer to to sort of provide your own. And then also, the screen provides next closest station with bike information as well.
And Ben, as our preferred vendor, is going to try to make sure that never happens.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's part of, and that's part of what we deliver is that, you know, there always are bikes there, there always are.
Thank you.
That's what we're going to work toward.
Other questions? Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on this item or these two items?
Good afternoon. I'm Sarah Pease, Vice President for Community Outreach at the Lincoln Community Foundation. The community foundation supports all projects and programs that are strengthening our community and enhancing our quality of life for the citizens of Lincoln. So we are excited to support the bike share program with one-hundred new bikes and eighteen bike stations across downtown Lincoln. City bike share programs have exploded in popularity the past decade. In Nebraska, Lincoln will be the third city to launch a bike share program. The additional cities are Omaha, as you know, and Kearney. Benefits of the bike share program include promoting physical activity and a healthy lifestyle, augmenting transportation choices throughout our city, serving as a tourist attraction, attracting and retaining a local workforce, and accessibility to all citizens of Lincoln. This enhancement of our intercity transportation system will assist commuters in avoiding congested downtown traffic and parking challenges. Tourists can enjoy exploring our beautiful city without the hassle of multiple forms of other types of transportation. This program will make getting around Lincoln more convenient with the added benefit of exercise. We're proud to partner with the City of Lincoln, Spree Tail, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Nebraska, and the University of Nebraska in supporting this program. And I urge all of you city council members to support the approval of the contracts. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Kushab Dloev. I'm with Spree Tail, one of the supporters of the bike share program. Pretty excited to be here today. We envisioned this moment probably three and a half years ago. One of the, I guess, why do we do what we do as a business, Spree Tail, is revolutionizing the communities we touch. Essentially, it's bettering and leaving the places we touch in better places, in better shapes. And I guess bike share initiative was one of those things where it is something different, that's something doesn't exist today, and we're very excited to support it. Besides some of the things that Sarah mentioned, you know, the health benefits, the transportation system, all of that. As a business, one of the things that is a challenge for us is bringing in new talent from out of the state and, you know, retaining best talents as well. And some of the companies we compete with, they're in Austin, they're in Boston, they're in Chicago, they're in Boulder, and all those great places that all happen to have bike share systems. And, you know, it just kind of raises the image of the city to have a bike share system. And it's something we'd like to support as well because of that, but in addition to everything else that Sarah mentioned as well. So I'd encourage you to support it as well. And we'll figure it out together and how to grow it, make it more sustainable, and improve the finances as well. So with that, if you have any questions, let me know.
Questions? Leary?
I understand Spree Tail's sponsoring a number of the, can you talk about how many of them will be sponsored by Spree Tail?
Yeah, so when we got involved, at the time, it was one sponsor, University of Nebraska. And when we got in, the number that was needed to raise was one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So we were willing to commit that. But with Sarah and Lincoln Community Foundation, we kind of did half and half, fifty-fifty. So we're pulling one-hundred-and-fifty K to support the system, and we will have about seventy or so bikes branded with our brands on it as well for the first... for the first two years of the operation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next is item 12, accepting a report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of November 16 through 30, 2017.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak on a claim before the city council? No one? Next item, please.
All right, next is item 13, approving an interlocal agreement between the Railroad Transportation Safety District and the city to transfer funding to the RTSD funding for the 33rd and Cornhusker project and to accept the ownership and maintenance of the safety improvements in the area.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Roger Feiger, representing the Lincoln Lancaster County RTSD. It's a privilege and it's exciting to be here today. David Carey, Planning Director, was intending to introduce this item, but had an emergency and needed to be called away. So I'll do my very best to do that. In a long series of cooperation, coordination, and collaboration, the city, the county, and the RTSD, I think, have worked for numerous decades to work together and make sure that the work efforts done in the community are most efficiently used. As you all know, the RTSD embarked about a year and a half ago on a major study of the area, kind of paralleling Cornhusker Highway and the BNSF tracks. And the study area was from 27th Street east of 48th Street and from Holdridge Street north to Superior Street. And the primary goal in that was analyzing and trying to improve the safety and reduce the congestion of the major conflicts between trains, pedestrians, and vehicles on North 33rd Street and on Adams Street at the BNSF crossings. And as the RTSD completed a PEL study, a Planning Environmental Linkage Study, and the board found some alternatives for transportation components that met purpose and need for the study. And as we got towards the end of that study, we began to hear some other things from the community. What is the vision for Northeast Lincoln? What is the future of Northeast Lincoln? And how does the project that the RTSD is proposing to do support or interact with that? And those were good questions. So the conversations begin with the Director of Public Works and Utilities, with the Planning Director. Several of you were very involved in some of those conversations. And as the planning department looked and said, maybe it's really time to take a step back. We do have a comp plan, but quite often when you go into a major investment study of some sort, it's maybe good to revalidate a land use plan, zoning, floodplain issues. And that's exactly what the city is partnering with the RTSD in this particular study and this next step as we move forward. Making sure that you analyze what is the best potential economic development, footprint, and model as we move on into the future. And a big piece of that is driven by what you can and can't do with the floodplain along Salt Creek. So in this next study, which has really three major compartments, the preparation of the subarea plan, preparation of a corridor enhancement plan, floodway and floodplain analysis. And then there'll be limited engineering and environmental work done to analyze those things. So in this particular interlocal agreement that's before you, the city is proposing to pay just the direct costs for the subarea plan, the corridor enhancement plan, and the floodway and floodplain analysis. And that's just in round numbers, it's about $330,000. It's about a third of the proposed contract costs that the RTSD has proposed in this next year-long study. I'm excited because the infrastructure that the RTSD would build for Northeast Lincoln becomes the property and the investment for the City of Lincoln into the future. And we need to make sure that that investment, while it improves safety, reduces the conflicts between the cars and trains. It fits the best opportunities for Northeast Lincoln as it would relate to economic development, perhaps change in land use, perhaps the change in the floodplain that allows the community to grow and then use the infrastructure that the RTSD would build out there. So with that, I would try to answer any questions you might have.
Larry and then John.
Thanks, Roger. I just wanted to check and make sure that this contract was the product of an RFP process.
Yes, it was. And Cindy Lamb sat in on our selection process. We went through a very exhaustive scoping. I think we had five firms. We shortlisted to two. We interviewed, and the lead team of Olson Associates was the selected team.
Okay. And this may be a question from Miki Esposito as opposed to you, I'm not sure. But just wondering about the source of the revenue for the $330,000 city contribution.
Well, I do have those, and if it gets too tough for me, we'll call, we have to finish.
Bringing the big guns.
And just as the RTSD is partnering with the city, the city is partnering within itself. As we talked about, subarea plan, corridor, and floodplain. So my understanding is planning has about $100,000 that they're putting into that watershed management, something a little over $50,000. And then miscellaneous engineering services, miscellaneous contractual services pick up the rest of that $330.
Thank you.
John, then Carl.
City taxpayers are also part of the RTSD.
Yes.
On the other two-thirds that it will be providing, typically there's some railroad money that's contributed. So out of that other two-thirds, how much is railroad and how much is taxpayer?
At this point, John, it's all RTSD taxpayer money at this point in time. Before you could get to a point to where the railroad or the Nebraska Department of Transportation or federal safety money can be brought in and made part of the project, you've got to prove that you have a feasible project, get the NEPA documents and the environmental work done, and be prepared to go to construction. And we would be certainly looking to both NDOT and FHWA and the railroads for cost sharing when we get there, but we're not there yet.
And RTSD is assessed on property taxes to the county?
Countywide, yes.
Countywide?
Yes.
So it's predominantly city taxpayers that are paying both sides of this?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Now, the, one of the things, over the years, I see more and more as important is, we have, we prioritize, and this definitely with the separation of transportation modes is important. And then we get to design, and the design costs here are three-quarters of a million or what have you, or six, seven hundred thousand are not, whatever. Anyway, that's part of the picture. But what comes out of the design really dictates what the ultimate cost is going to be. And there've been projections of 70 to 80 million, to throw out round numbers, we don't know.
Sure.
With this enlarged operative to tell Olson Associates to do a myriad, look at a myriad of opportunities here and design features, it creates the potential to make this cost higher. With that in mind, are we, in this short-term design and lesser cost, going to be incurring millions of dollars of excess costs that maybe could be pared down? And so I guess two parts there. One, what's really controlling that design so that we don't get it to be so out of the box that we hurt other priorities?
Sure.
Because, I mean, 60 to 80 million, or 70 to 80 millions is a substantial amount when we look at other projects like the South Beltway and so forth. And it is a lot of it out of, taxpayers are paying it all, or, I'm sorry, most of it. And so I'm just looking, how do we assure that although these are laudable goals that you outlined for other needs, you know, redeveloping, creating areas in the northeast area, and I mean 33rd, 35th, I mean, Lincoln goes to 98th and so on. So how do we control that so we don't come back with this huge $80 million when perhaps 50 million would solve it?
Good question. Actually, I think the step that the city and the RTSD is taking today to do the subarea plan and look at the floodplain is the first step to try to assure that we don't spend money that isn't fully realized in the roadway corridors and the bridges that we build. The, looking at the floodplain and making sure that the transportation corridors fit, first of all, allows us then to make sure that we're going to build a transportation system that marries up to the land use. And you really can't separate transportation and land use. They work, they're an iterative process. And so by having the land use first, what, in doing the land use plan and looking at that, then we would be doing limited engineering, comparing the two alternatives that were brought forward with the PEL study to see if they fit. Or if they don't, how do you modify them to go around an area of redevelopment or a different spot of connection, call it to Cornhusker Highway or to Adams or to 33rd? So I think it gives us a better sense of what we need to build in the future. The other thing I would say is it's just a constant anymore for engineers to say, whatever we build, it's got to be efficient, it's got to be easy to maintain, and it's got to last a long time. We spoke a lot in the RFP and the selection process about making sure that whatever gets designed and built is just that, very efficient, it's not gold-plated, it isn't something that we don't need, and that it's designed in such a way as to last a long time for the city.
It just concerns me. And I agree 100% with what you said, and I appreciate those directives. And it's just as concerning when you see 70 to 80 million thrown out there because sometimes things are designed to consume that, or the wrong estimates are made and it comes out to be 100 million instead of that. And we're finding that in some other projects currently.
I think that is certainly a valid question. In the 26 years now that I've had the pleasure of serving for the RTSD, one of the goals was not to spend the budget, but make sure we had a budget to do what the board felt we needed to do. And the other thing I think that's important about that is with the budget that we've laid out, we've also run cash flow projections, we're keeping a 12-year CIP. And we have shown that with cost sharing from partners such as the NDOT, the railroads, and the federal government, the RTSD in this community can afford to build a project that's in that range. But we certainly aren't going to try to spend 80 if we can find a solution that's less than that.
Thank you.
Okay, Carl. Okay, thank you. All right. So we've been talking about this conflicted area for a long time, and check that off. I mean, that's something that's essential and for the safety of the community, particularly businesses and individuals, residents in North Lincoln that use that, that's vitally important. Also, during this time, when we've been thinking about that, we've had Dead Man's Run, and we've had some Salt Creek conversations. And in looking at those, you see the floodplain and Dead Man's Run where that's impacted, but then also kind of as part of it, and really more in this area at Salt Creek, that's the biggest problem. And we're also having some discussions about Salt Creek and some remedies that might be available to help with that. Now, another transportation piece of it is connecting North 33rd Street to Superior, enhancing that connection for North Star High School, residents, businesses in that area, making their transportation system improve. So that's part of it. Now we're hearing about development opportunities if, you know, by doing the roads and having it more accessible and taking things out, land out of the floodplain and all these, it's a lot. So who makes these, who's going to make the ultimate decision?
Well, I think the cool thing about this interlocal agreement is that land use and the subarea development is more of a city decision and in collaboration, I would say, with the RTSD board. The RTSD board doesn't want to build a roadway that is in the way of an economic development or is in the wrong place in the floodplain. So I actually think that by doing the subarea plan, we make sure that transportation networks and bridges fit and can someday get to 33rd and Superior or connect some of those others without necessarily building a corridor through developable ground. And then afterwards, you say, oh, wow, if we had just built the road over here, look what else could have happened there. So the RTSD's other goal in all this is that whatever transportation system is built and meets those needs of safety and reduction of conflicts with the trains also facilitates and coordinates with the city's long-range transportation plan, of which that corridor up through the area from Cornhusker to Superior is a piece of that. Doesn't mean the RTSD would pay for it, but we want to make sure that what is built complements the city's plan and can allow that occur in the future.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next is item 14, identifying and declaring the area generally located along South 48th Street between Calvert Street and Pioneer's Boulevard as the South 48th Street business area and approving appointment of various members to the Business Improvement Board.
Members of the council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, the applicant in this case. We have a BID in College View. But this is a recreation of that BID, and I'll tell you why. About a year ago, maybe a little longer, we discovered that there was a very substantial growth in the cost of the landscaping contracts that we were getting back from our request for landscaping work for BIDs around the city. And we also discovered that in the BID language, and several of them, we had drafted language years ago, and I'm not exactly sure where it came from, that made a maximum growth from one year to the next of 5%. So when you've got a 12 or 15% growth in a landscaping proposal, we did what we could. And that was to generally downsize what we did for BIDs and to make sure that we comported with the rules under which they were being operated. But we've gone back to those BIDs and said, look, if this happens again, how do you want to handle it? And we've had three different responses. One of them was, if that's the case, we'll simply take less service, live with it, and stay within the 5%. Another one said, do the 5%, and then our own business association or whatever will pick up the slack. We're going to do some of our own expensing. We think we can get it cheaper than what the contract is there. Some of it we'll do on a volunteer basis, leave the 5%, but we won't diminish the amount of landscaping we do. We'll pick up the difference ourselves. The third one is this one. College View said essentially, well, we'd like to recreate the BID without that provision, or at least contemplate it and think about it. You might wonder why we couldn't just amend the BID. State law doesn't permit it. In fact, we know that from last year when we redid the Downtown Business Improvement District. To do that alteration, we had to undo what we had to create a new round. So we don't have the option under state law to simply make an adjustment to it. We have to essentially recreate it. This is the first of that step. What it does is it says, well, would these people get together, suggest the kinds of terms and conditions in which a BID could be done and those boundaries? If they come back with a positive report and the council allows us, we would then go to the businesses in the area and allow them to choose whether or not they wanted a BID. And then in the event there was sufficient community support, we would then come back in a third iteration and create the BID with the approval of the council. We're asking for the first of those steps. It's an outgrowth that we've had with the College View Business Improvement District, and this is their recommendation on how to proceed.
Questions?
Carl? So, and you just, you said the former College View Business Association?
It still exists.
Okay. And, but this is talking about South 48th Street?
I'm using the phrase interchangeably.
Okay.
I think the mind goes to a particular part of South 48th.
Right.
If I say College View.
Okay.
That's what I'm talking about.
Hey, John.
Thank you, Mr. Landis. A question I would have, you made this statement, which I thought was very appropriate and realistic, that you're discovering with some of the BIDs, there are a lot of them, that the maintenance costs are exceeding the projections you had. And as I was mentioning on some other... And as I was mentioning on some other elements in meetings with you, that design is becoming more and more important in a lot of things we do, whether it be deployment of materials, capital improvements, and personnel. Are you learning some things that we might use for future BIDs and so forth to help those perhaps design them so that they're more maintainable on a financial basis to help everybody involved?
I wish I could specifically report two or three examples, that I can say that I've been in those rooms to hear the conversation, and moving to natural grasses and low maintenance plant materials has certainly been talked about. What I don't have is a design to give you. I can say that those concerns have been raised and are part of the conversation.
Okay, thank you. Hey, other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next we'll go on to our public hearing ordinance's second reading. Item 15 is creating sewer district 1189 for the purpose of constructing a sewer district to serve seven properties and assessing the cost thereof against the benefited properties.
Hi, Susie Philippi, Engineering Services. Preena Mills was the requestor for this sewer district. At the time their plant was built, they were outside the city limits, and so they constructed their own septic system. This is an industrial area that ended up being annexed in 2005. The proposed project would allow a total of seven properties to connect to the city wastewater system. The total cost we're estimating at $330,000, with estimated assessment costs for each property owner at around $34,000, and they have up to 20 years to pay. The wastewater department would pay for the design and engineering cost of the eight-inch main, while the property owners would pay for the construction cost. The special assessment revolving committee gave approval for this project on October 10th. We held a property owner meeting with this group on November 6th. Those present were very positive about the project and anxious to get it going. With their help that day, we came up with the proposed alignment. That alignment would connect to a 72-inch main that crosses Fletcher west of 84th. It would run parallel with Fletcher, continue west, and then follow the property line to Cornhusker, and then down to Preena Mills. At this time, no one has reported their septic system failing, but at the meeting, several told us that they're having to do frequent maintenance calls. If the resolution passed, we'd hope to have this built in 2018. Any questions?
Questions for Mrs. Philippi? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next I'll call items 16 and 17. There are text amendment 17015 amending various sections of Title 27 of the Linklitz Book Code regarding accessory dwellings, and item 17 is text amendment 17015 amending Title III Design Standards for Zoning Regulations by adding a new chapter 3.115 Accessory Dwelling Design Standards.
Andrew Theroff, Planning Staff. So just about a year ago, we had a briefing with you folks, the city council, to talk about accessory dwellings. The conclusion from that briefing was that we should look into a text amendment to increase the opportunity for accessory dwellings in the city. So that's what we've done. We put together a working group consisting of neighborhood representatives, home builders, other interested stakeholders. We met with them six times over the course of a few months earlier this year. We met with the Mayor's Neighborhood Roundtable three times throughout the course of the year to discuss this proposal. And then we also sent notifications to all of our neighborhood reps that we have in our database, saying, here's our proposal, we'd like to come out, speak with you. We ended up speaking with four different neighborhood associations, and from all of that input, we put together this proposal here today. I'll just walk through it really quickly. There's a couple different elements to that. So today, in the R1 through our four districts, our typical single-family districts, if you have enough area for a duplex, you can build two attached units, you can build a duplex. What you can't do today is build two detached units. So with this proposal, if you have a lot big enough for a duplex, you could build a single-family home and a detached second unit, that would be the accessory dwelling. So to detach, you'd have to meet a few conditions. Some of the big ones are, there'd be size limitations, you'd be limited to 800 square feet, or 40% of the main building for the accessory dwelling. The owner would be required to live in one of the units, you'd need to meet the height and setback requirements of the main building, and then one additional parking stall would be required for the accessory dwelling. So that's in the R1 through our four districts. In the R5 through our eight districts, which is our more multifamily districts, today you can actually build two detached, single-family dwellings on one lot. But to be able to do that, you need to meet the lot area for two single-family dwellings. And I think the best way to explain that would be by looking at our chart here from the ordinance. So we'll just look at R5 as an example. So today, if you want to build two single-family dwellings on an R5 lot, you'd need 5,000 square feet of lot area per dwelling, so you'd need 10,000 square feet of lot area. If you wanted to build like a duplex in R5, you'd only need 2,500 square feet of lot area per unit. So to build a duplex, you'd only need 5,000 square feet of lot area. But to build two units that are separated, you'd need 10,000 square feet of lot area. That's where we're at today. So with this proposal, we'd be saying, if you want to build two detached units in R5 through our eight, you'd only need the duplex area. So it'd be a little easier to build two detached units. Associated with these items would be design standards as well. In short, accessory dwelling should be compatible with the main building and with the neighborhood. And then there's one other minor piece, we're calling it conditioned area, that's detached finished floor area. That would be for uses typically found in the house, so things like a rec room, craft room, something that's not really a dwelling unit, but is still finished floor area, it's heated and cooled. Today, that has to be attached to your house. You can't have, say, a detached rec room. With this proposal, you could do a detached room that has finished floor area, you just need to meet the same setbacks and height requirements of the house. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Questions? John? Just a minor one, when you say detached, let's say you've got a single-family home with a detached garage, does this allow them to have the detached garage and an accessory dwelling, or how does that fit in?
Yeah, so we have, actually, on here, we have maximum areas for accessory buildings. This is an existing piece of our zoning regulation, this was put in last year. But for example, just to keep it simple, say you have a R3 lot that's 9,000 square feet, kind of a typical-sized lot. By default, you could have 1,500 square feet of accessory buildings, so that would count your dwelling, detached garage, shed, anything like that. So yes, you could have multiple accessory buildings that are detached, as long as you're within these area requirements.
So how does this legislation change that? Because we're looking at the...
Yeah, so we're not really changing, we're not changing this table at all. All it really means is, say you had a 1,500-square-foot detached garage, and your lot met these other criteria, where you'd be capped at 1,500, you wouldn't be able to put in an accessory dwelling. But say you met all the accessory dwelling regulations, you had a 500-square-foot detached garage, assuming your house was the right size, you could have an 800-square-foot accessory dwelling as well detached from the house.
Well, the detached garage doesn't take the one detached?
No, no, you could have multiple detached buildings, it's more about area.
Thank you.
Carl? Yeah. So what if you have a detached garage now, but it's not used as a garage, it's been converted into a family room, or a studio, or something else? Are they outside of where they should be?
Yeah, that probably wouldn't be a legal use today. I suppose if you could meet the conditions of accessory dwellings, or the conditioned area conditions that we're proposing now, that would be legal. But yeah, in most cases, those probably aren't legal conversions.
Thank you. Okay, Lyrian.
Thank you, I know this has been a really long process, and a lot of people have weighed in, and most of the concerns seem to have been addressed. This proposal's not as broad as maybe the original one that you brought forward, but just wanted to ask about one concern that was raised about enforcement. How will enforcement work on this? Is this a complaint-based type of system?
Yeah, so it would be treated as any other zoning code violation, so it would be complaint-based.
And who would go to planning, or who would...
Building and safety would enforce that, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to thank you for all the work that's gone into this. This is a subject I've been anxious to see come forward for the last four years, and looking forward to this passing.
Great.
All right. Would anyone else like to testify on this item, or these items?
Good afternoon, excuse me, good afternoon. My name is Anne Post. I am an attorney with Baylor Ebner. I'm here today on behalf of the Home Builders Association of Lincoln in support of this amendment. The home builders support this amendment because it allows homeowners to expand the use of their property, to fully use their property. Builders are experiencing an uptick in requests for this type of construction, for this type of project, and often it's associated with allowing families to care for elderly family members, to find the best possible circumstances to allow them to do that. And given current market trends, we believe that demand for this type of housing is only going to increase. Therefore, the Home Builders Association is fully in support of this amendment, and would also encourage you to consider, at some point in the future, expanding the use and the acceptability of accessory dwelling units to lots other than those that are large enough for a duplex. But we currently urge support of this amendment, and with that, I'll thank you for your time.
Questions for Ms. Post? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dan Klein, 1960, Southwest 112th, but I have businesses in Lincoln. I want to encourage the council to vote to approve this as a means of adding additional flexibility for the building community, as Angie just talked about, but the opportunity to meet needs of family with more and more costs dealing with the elder care, as well as having children that are not moving away from home, but need to move away from home. And so I thank you for that opportunity, because it's something that is, in this community, a real need, and something that can be partially addressed through the approval of this texted change. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you. Anyone else? Next item, please.
All right, that concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session.
I have to admit that I was intrigued by the failure to launch argument.
It's real.
Public hearing resolutions. Item eight is the weed assessments. This was introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
John, seconded by Cindy.
We do have motion to amend number one, to remove the property 7301 Ballard Avenue from the tax report.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Cindy. Discussion? Please call the roll on amendment number one.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Is there a discussion on the main motion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 10 is the bike-share system equipment agreement, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 10 is the bike-share system equipment agreement, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 10 is the bike-share system equipment agreement, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl.
We do have a motion to amend number one, this is to insert attached pages one through seven in lieu of the existing pages one through seven of the current contract.
And I'll move the motion to amend number one, and just have the clerk note that there's a typo on the page where it should say the value of the contract's reduced from 755,192 instead of 775. Is that something you can just change? It doesn't affect the...
Is that on the motion to amend itself?
It's on the motion to amend description.
Okay, yeah, not a problem.
And so that'll just be reduced to the 679,613 figure.
Okay, the amendment's been moved by Lyrian.
Second.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion?
I'm just excited about this, I think it's really going to be wonderful for the growth of our city, supporting the growth of our city, whether it's the Haymarket expansion, and the number of students that are growing at UNL, and helping to drive the demand for this, and really should enhance the quality of life for our residents.
Okay, please call the roll on the amendment.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Now on the main motion. Cindy?
So I would have liked to have heard from a few more people that maybe we're going to actually use the bike-share system. I appreciate that we're doing this as a community, and I have been to other communities that have these, and have been keeping track of some on the West Coast and so forth, and I, I'm encouraged by the sponsorships they've said they're going to give, but we heard only from the sponsors, and so I would have liked to have had the biking community come out and told us they were going to use them.
They already own their own bikes.
Yeah. Well, they're encouraged for tourism, right?
Okay, other comments?
Yeah, I just would respond a little bit to Cindy, when they did have a seminar last summer, I think, on this, maybe it was the summer before last, at the universities, it was summertime, it was a big meeting, there were a lot of people there, so I think the riders are, will come, build it, and they will come, and it's exam week, so that's probably where they are, hopefully.
Okay.
And also just as part of the Downtown Lincoln Association responsibilities that Carl and I share on the council, there's support from that organization, and a belief too, that hotels will be very appreciative of this opportunity for their guests to have a quick and easy means of getting around Lincoln while they're staying here.
All right. On the main motion, please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 11 is the two-year bike-share operations and maintenance agreement, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Now on the main motion. Cindy?
Yes, I just wanted to point out, this is two of these in a row, we haven't had anyone come forward and complain about denials.
Let's not nix it.
I'm just, I'm just very appreciative of the law department, I was going to say, appreciate our law department for doing things good and not making anybody mad.
All right, please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 13 is the interlocal agreement with the RTSD, this is introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Cindy?
Thank you, you knew I was going to talk about this. So I love that we're doing this subarea study, it's not adding any time. I was one of the folks that said, hey, where is the road going to go, and let's make sure it's not going to interfere with development. So I really appreciate going forward on this and the city's cooperation in this, and I think it does further, what are we going to do as a city, and it keeps us from having
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item fourteen is creating the new business improvement district in South 48th Street, between Calvert Street and Pioneer's Boulevard, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item fourteen is creating the new business improvement district in South 48th Street, between Calvert Street and Pioneer's Boulevard, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Our public hearing ordinances, second reading, are items fifteen through seventeen. Ordinances on third reading, item eighteen, approving a lease agreement between the city and Exte-Net Systems for the purpose of installing small-cell wireless technology on city-owned street light poles, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item nineteen is adding a new section 9.08.120 to the Lincoln Municipal Code to provide for procedures for police officers in issuing citations for a violation of the city code and grounds for determining if detention is necessary, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item twenty is consent amendments ordinance, amending sections 24.05.240, 250, and 270, to move examination responsibilities to the examining board of plumbers, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item twenty-one is amending section 924.140 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to provide for more specific terms and conditions for larceny, amending section 924.160 to raise the max level for theft of services covered under the code, adding a new section 924.165 entitled Consolidation of Theft Offenses to provide for the prosecution of conduct in sections 120 and 2160 as a single offense, embracing the separately enumerated offenses, amending section 924.190 to provide more clear and definite terms and conditions for loitering and trespassing, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item twenty-two, amending section 10.06.080 to allow for enforcement of penalties for refusal to sign traffic citations, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Cindy?
Yes, so I wanted to thank the law department. Going through all of these cleanup code and amendments, I noticed that a lot of them had to do with bringing us into consistency with state code. And so I asked them to forward just too many references from state code, and they provided a very thorough list. And so I wanted to thank the law department for doing that. Very quickly, too, I might add.
All right. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item twenty-three is amending sections 10.08.010, 020, 040, and 050, to be consistent with state law and allow for enforcement of the law regarding motor vehicle registration and license plates, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item twenty-four, amending section 10.12.030 to add new traffic control red arrow to the traffic control legend, amending sections 1014.200 subsection B and 1014.220 to add language on how drivers shall proceed in traffic when there is a steady circular red light or red arrow, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item twenty-five, amending section 10.14.190 to provide that left turns shall be made as nearly as practical in the extreme left-hand lane, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item twenty-six, amending section 10.14.420 to have a penalty consistent with state law for the same violation, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
I'll still do yes.
Okay. Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item twenty-seven, amending section 10.16.030 to be consistent with state law, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item twenty-eight, amending section 10.16.060, I'm sorry, 063, pursuant to recent changes to Nebrev Stat 60-4108 and Nebrev Stat 60-4109 to allow a sentence of probation without further license revocation after conviction for this offense, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item twenty-nine, amending section 10.16.065 to be consistent with state law for the same offenses, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item thirty, amending section 10.30.080 to clarify where soliciting activities are prohibited to protect pedestrian and motor vehicle safety, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion, a substitution. A motion to amend with a substitution ordinance. And that would be...
The language we went over earlier?
Yes, the language we went over earlier. The substitution would revise the language on line fourteen, and add additional language that reads, "Or the person being solicited is located in a vehicle which is parked or stopped in a public street or alley."
Do you second that, Cindy?
Second, yep.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Cindy. Discussion? Please call the roll on the amendment.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Now on the main motion.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item thirty-one, amending section 10.32.070 to clarify that any motor vehicle that exceeds the prohibited length or width, with or without a trailer attached, cannot be parked in certain residential zoning districts, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item thirty-two, consent amendment ordinance, amending section 2.42.040 to move the workforce investment opportunity administration from urban development to the mayor's office, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item thirty-three is a consent amendments ordinance, amending section 8.08.030 to declare the violation of this code section to be a public nuisance rather than a crime, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.